Do I need a pen?
All right. Welcome to the Olathe Board of Education March Regular Meeting. Joy, will you call the roll?
Mr. Whitcliff?
Here.
Mr. Boyd? Mr. Beveridge?
Here.
Mr. McCune?
Here.
Ms. Schultz?
Here.
Ms. Felter?
Here.
Mr. Gary?
Here.
All right, and will you all stand and join me in the touch of the evening? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we will jump right into 2.01 Public Comments. Our first speaker is Angie Powers. Brian has to read that. Forget it, every meeting, I had a giant note here to remember it.
At each regular meeting, the Board of Education reserves limited time for individuals wishing to address the board. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room and state your name. Tonight, we request that individual speakers limit their comments to five minutes. A staff person will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the five-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire board, and if a response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access channel and audio recorded as a matter of public record. Thank you.
All right, I'll get a right next one.
You're good.
First speaker is Angie Powers.
Good evening. My name is Angie Powers, coming to you from Olathe Middle School. Tonight, I'm here for Megan Berks, who we all know well, because we've gotten to hear from her at the last few meetings. Good evening, Board of Education. My name is Megan Berks, and I made a promise to you months ago that I would always show up and use my voice to make sure all voices in our school community were being heard. I was able to attend in person tonight, but I didn't let that stop me from having my voice heard. But Megan, I believe you're watching this from your room to your room screen. This past Monday, March 1st, the Olathe Middle School and High Schools moved to full in-person learning. Over the course of this pandemic, there have been many voices saying schools need to open. Well, I'm here to tell you that Olathe schools have been open this year. Our schools have been open, our teachers, our parents, our lunch staff, our custodians have been working extremely hard, and our students, rather, have been resilient. Together, we can shape the support that is needed for our school community moving forward. As some of you might be aware, not every secondary student felt 100% confident and safe walking into their school on Monday morning for full in-person learning. I have heard from many amazing educators who have reached out to their students to help them feel the safest they could while in that educator's classroom. My task for you, as a Board of Education member, is to find ways to support our students who are nervous and help them feel safe attending school each day. As a side note, I had a colleague who shared at the end of the first or second day of full in-person learning, she was talking to one of her students, and he mentioned that he's not taking any drinks of water throughout the day. He's nervous about taking his mask down to take a drink of water. So we have a wide variety of students in our schools. Our role as an educator is to support our students academically, mentally, and emotionally. If our students don't feel safe, there's no way they will be able to focus and learn. I urge you to continue looking at the safe plans for each secondary building, as well as all of our other buildings. I ask you to go into those buildings and see distancing or lack thereof in classrooms across the district. I ask that you learn about the lunch plans and how students will be safe and be able to eat, and if buildings need your support, please provide it to them. As another side note, I know that many of you have been in buildings this week, have been in buildings before this week, and we just ask for you to continue to do that so we can keep diligence. You, as a board, made the decision that it's safe for secondary to return to full in-person learning, so now it is your turn to support our staff and students in this transition. We need our students and teachers to feel safe. I will continue to use my voice to support safety being the priority. I have the utmost respect for each of you and hope that you take the time to provide safety and support for everyone, even those voices that you haven't directly heard from tonight. Now that we are in full in-person, it's crucial that your time and resources are spent supporting this learning environment for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Brian Connell.
Good evening. It's nice to see everybody back up there again. So thanks for having us in. Wouldn't it be nice if we were all outside in this beautiful weather instead of here? I know everyone's been able to experience it, but it is nice out, and it is nice to have spring back. So with that said, regardless of the weather, it is good that the kids and the teachers and the staff and all the kids, administrators, are back in school full-time. And so I want to thank you. I want to thank the administrators, the school board, the teachers, the staff, the students themselves, and the families who have committed to following the rules, to getting the schools open in a very, very stressful week, right? So I want to acknowledge that. It was a very stressful week, right? Kids who were trepidatious about getting back into school, teachers who hadn't really had full classes, you know, everybody. And then, of course, all the sports kids had all the tryouts this week, so they got extra stresses. My kid was at 5:45 in the morning at school for tryouts, and then still the tryouts at 6:30 every night. So it was a long day. Never seen my son in bed at 8 o'clock three nights in a row since he was 10. Thank you, Olathe Schools, for wearing him out. So, but with that, I'd also like to take advantage of saying some of the unknowns are becoming more known, and that is something that we have to take each day one at a time. We need to acknowledge it, look at it, identify it, mitigate it, right? And let's evolve in the schools together. With that in mind, our elementary kids have been in school. Their teachers and the staff and the families have been doing a yeoman's job since, what, September? So they know exactly what this should feel like and can feel like. I heard there's a lot of chaos last fall, the first week, but all the teachers said, "It's good to see them." The kids were happy to see the teacher. So with those little guys in mind, and I say the fifth graders on down and all the families, I'd like to ask a favor, right? I had a bunch of texts, and I said, I was like, "What would you like me to talk about?" And a bunch of moms and dads said, "We would like to ask the administrators to start at least thinking about," if they haven't, "allowing the kids in elementary school to have at least one recess a day without a mask, to reconnect emotionally, mentally, physically, and spiritually with each other and breathe a little bit better if the weather's outside." And I'm not talking about inside, I'll look if you guys handle that. But it'd be nice if it was every recess, but I'm asking you all to start thinking about that transition for them, for those families, because they've been biding by the rules unless that showed they're very, very, very safe. So there's some anomalies still. And while I'm on the subject of masks, I have to, for the record, say, we all, as a community, would like, and we're looking forward to hearing all the details, seeing the details of what the opening schools this fall looks like as soon as it's available. If it's in a framework now, I'd like to be able to see all the details by the May meeting because frankly, parents need the right, the option to understand what does that mean to them? Are they going to commit themselves to full-time school? They going to go to a private school? What does that mean, right? And so I'm going to ask that we think about that the default for the fall, everything's fluid, be no masks, and that we have issues of say, if, then, then we add masks. Let's start with the default of no masks in the fall, and what does that mean instead of masked by default? And with that said, you all have 7,000 kids you've got to bring back in the school from remote. I know we're going to hear some of that tonight, but what I'd like to make sure I go on the record is saying that I'd like no backroom negotiations to bring those kids from remote learning to in-school. No, hey, we'll give you, everyone starts with masks in the fall if you all come back to school, because I know that's a lot of revenue and a lot of kids. We need to be very transparent. You have 23,000 kids in school full-time right now, parents, teachers, and administrators. 7,000 can find their way in, but I don't want to give them anything just to put them in the schools. So that's my question about the masks, because don't give them, everybody starts with masks, to bring them back. So I look forward to hearing your plans on that, keeping us in the loop so that we can support you all. One last thing is, for those that are watching online, if you've ever seen any of the other board members, board meetings, I want to go on record that this truly is a collegial group. They're respectful, they're respectful of the speakers, the administrators, and so for my, what, nine months of coming to these meetings and have been to six other board groups, oh my gosh, it's nice to come to an Olathe school board meeting. So with that said, I'm finished. Thank you.
And our last speaker is Holly Palacio.
Hello again. My name is Holly Palacio. My husband, as you may remember, my husband and I have three children, one senior at South, you've met her, one sophomore also at South, and an eighth grader in the CBR program at Frontier Trail. I really just wanted to come to say thank you for the first full, almost full week back in school full-time. I will tell you that my teenagers were super thrilled with having to go all day, but their attitudes are better, their demeanor is better, and they know that they are where they need to be. So thank you. I will reiterate Brian's last comment. Thank you very much for your civility. Having watched over the last year other boards and how they handle not only public comments, but even interactions within their own administrative discussions, you all are professional, you are candid, which is appreciated, but at the end of the day, you kept it civil, and it is greatly appreciated and highly respected. I will go back to one of my original requests in coming to see you all, that you involve parents, students, and the broader community in discussions on curriculum and social, emotional, and health discussions. At that time, we were in remote, and I was hopeful that maybe a team could be put together that included parents at the table for decision-making, and I will reiterate that request. If this year has taught us nothing else, it's that we need to be communicating more, not less, not speaking at each other, but with each other, and so I would reiterate that request. In terms of making decisions that have long-term impacts, my primary interest in moving forward is the implication of the dyslexia task force recommendations that are now requirements across the state. I would ask you to consider teaching in appropriate format for dyslexics in the general ed classroom. I would ask that communications about what the district has already done to implement the task force recommendations be communicated outside of the special education communication format. Most undiagnosed students are not in this bed programs. They don't receive the communication, they don't go to the parent briefings, and they're not getting access to the tools that you may or may not already be implementing. In broad conversations in the dyslexia community in Olathe, we don't know what's the screener, what training has already been implemented for teachers, and what is the curriculum that is going to be used to remediate those functionally illiterate students within your elementary, middle, and high school programs? Excuse me. Finally, on a personal note, I would ask that you communicate not only in district administration, but down to building-level administration, that our seniors have particular losses this year. While the rest of the district is going to carry on and recover lost opportunities for interpersonal relationship-building and memory-making, there's no do-overs for our seniors. And every moment counts, and it's flying by. I'm watching that calendar just tick away. Some seniors are still wondering if that graduation date that is on the calendar is going to stick, so I'd respectfully ask that you put a date on the calendar with confidence, communicate that down to your building-level administration, and any other end-of-year activities, whether it's prom, whether it's banquets, award ceremonies, whatever that last looks like for them, put it on the calendar, make it stick, give them confidence that they've got a few more memories to make here with Olathe. But again, thank you very much.
Thank you. And that concludes our speakers for this evening. So we are going to jump into 2.01, information presentation learning for 2021, 2022. Dr. Yeager?
Good evening. Thank you for a little time to visit with you this evening. Before we get started, I want to introduce you to two people you may or may not know. Right to my left is TJ Olmer. TJ is our Director of Blended Learning, a position this year that really has meant managing 7,000 remote learners, and their day-to-day experience is something we've obviously never done in our district before. And then Ryan Huff is next to him as well, and Ryan is currently an instructional coach in our district on special assignment, supporting our remote learning and the work that we've done this year in that area. So I'd be remiss not to say that both of these guys have done an amazing job this year, have worked their tails off at doing something that probably nobody else is doing for 7,000 kids, working with schools, and parents, and all those things. So I just wanted to acknowledge that as we get started this evening. As you may or may not know, we are, of course, of course you know this, we are looking at next school year, and we're working with KSD, you know, trying to be sure that we understand what we are able to do and not able to do next year in terms of providing learning models for our school district and our students and our families. As we look at next year, the State Department of Education has made it clear to us, and they're navigating next document, that for next school year, we will be able to enroll students essentially in in-person learning or in virtual learning will be the two options. So they have said that remote learning will not be something school districts in the state of Kansas will be able to facilitate next year, that if schools, school districts would want to support students being at home, it would look like virtual learning. So we know that there will be a continued need for that for some students in our district, and so we had the foresight to recognize that might happen. So in the first part of February, we filed our application to open a virtual school in Olathe should we need to do that. And so what we'll share with you tonight is very high level, what our plans are kind of from a high level in terms of virtual offering for our students and our community here in Olathe for next year, knowing that we have more steps to complete. So the first part with KSD was to complete the application. There's about four more steps that we need to go through that are similar to opening a school building and those kinds of pieces. So our hope is to get that done pretty quickly, so by the 1st of April, we'll be able to share information widely with our community about what our virtual option will look like and enrollment process and all those kinds of things. But we wanted TJ and Ryan to get an opportunity just to visit with you a little bit tonight to give you the high-level pieces of that and then answer any questions that we can answer at this point. So with that, I'll turn it over to TJ.
All right. Well, first of all, thank you for your time tonight. I do appreciate it. Also appreciate this opportunity to bring you some of the details, and like Dr. Yeager was saying, this will be a big overview because we do have a lot of work ahead of us, and we're excited about this work and bringing this opportunity to our Olathe residents. So with that being said, go ahead. Oh, sorry. I'm new up here. So, all right. So the first thing that's really important to understand is that there is a difference between remote and virtual, and Dr. Yeager was hitting on this, but I just want to be clear about it. This year with remote, it was an opportunity that was given to us from KSD, and with that opportunity, we had to do a lot of pivoting within the buildings and pairing this stuff up within the principles and the infrastructure that was already within the building. So it was totally a response to a pandemic, and as we move forward and the idea of virtual, this will be something that will become a marquee part of what we do in Olathe as a building within our system, or a virtual building within our system. And so the biggest differences are is that, again, this was a response in a pandemic. We had to tie our staffs and our schedules together with remote, and so as we move to a virtual setting, the whole will be standalone. It'll stand by itself, and we will have our own staff. We will not be tied to the in-building schedules and staffing where we have this halftime remote teacher and a halftime in-person teacher. These teachers will be fully invested in virtual learning, and that's what's exciting for us as we stand alone. So this will reduce the amount of pressure that we already are putting on our, in our buildings currently. We won't have this two worlds being balanced within one building or this in-between pieces that we have going on, which our staff are, they are doing amazing with it and working through all the issues that come along with it. But as a standalone building or a standalone platform, there's a lot of benefits that come with that, and again, the biggest thing is that we have our own staff. They will be focused on the virtual setting, and it will reduce the amount of stress on the building, and it'll also reduce the amount of stress that we have with our technologies and things like that as we move forward. All right. The next one? All right. So why does Olathe need a virtual school? And so one of the things that we have noticed throughout this year is that there, first of all, the, there is a need within the community. We have found that there are certain students that are excelling in this platform for freedom for the families, that the virtual world gives them, gives them this opportunity to work at their own time, and families are helping and get those types of things going. So we have this group of students that are just excelling. We also have health needs, and we have some other things that a virtual school can really address within our district and give our families more options and freedom as we move forward. And so that was a need that popped up as we were going throughout the year. And so throughout the year, there was emails that were coming in that were just saying, "So is this something we're just doing this year, or is this something that we can look forward to going forward?" And so just recognizing that this was something that became a need for Olathe through this pandemic, and the remote model really helped us really see that there's a group of people that needed something like this. And so with that, we are also looking forward to, the trends in education are really about this virtual world, and I can see that this tool will really help and benefit throughout our district as we move forward. So our trends are moving that way in the educational world and having this opportunity, and so I'm really excited about being a part of this and moving forward. So with that, I'm going to hand this over to Ryan Huff.
Thanks for giving me a moment to talk with you guys. As we began to look at and dream a little bit about what type of kid was going to come into this setting and really have success and be in a place where they were supposed to be, not only best for them, but their families, these are some of the characteristics that kind of resonated with not only us, but through phone calls with parents and emails from students. And so a couple of those characteristics and traits you see up there. Obviously, all of these things, I've got a second grader, I've got a kid who's going to be a kindergartner next year, and I've got a little kiddo who's going to start preschool. And so as I look at that and I say, "Are any of those kids really, truly independent learners?" I'm like, "You know what? Maybe, maybe not so much, right? But always thinking through it from the age of appropriate justification or whatever that level is at that age, right? And so thinking about all of these things through that lens, do these kids have success this year as well as that age level thing? So some of our kiddos, though, that are going to come into the setting aren't going to have all of these traits, and so that's why we began, we begun, rather, to have conversations with some of our support staff within the district, and we've talked to special services, and we have a meeting scheduled with special services again next week, and then we've talked to ELL, and we said, "Kids who maybe are going to struggle in a certain area, what might be the things that we need to put in place now to help make sure that if a kid doesn't have every one of these traits, how are they going to make sure to be as successful as possible?" And so what are some of the goals that we have through this virtual setting? We do want to provide a variety of coursework as well as opportunities for all of our students, but also understanding, and this is definitely a lesson we learned this year, that not everything that is offered in the traditional school and our brick and mortars has success or can be offered in a virtual setting. And so processing some of that, having some of those conversations that, you know, aren't always easy to have, but coming to that reality is important. We do want to make sure through a goal is that our kids are only in the virtual setting and not splitting time between. That is something that other surrounding districts have seen put quite a bit of stress on different aspects of their system. And that's not what we're trying to do through this. We're trying to relieve stress and make sure that our kids are in the right place and not create other hoops to jump for them. And we truly want to make sure that social, emotional learning is a priority. This year, we've had to be so reactionary that unfortunately, that hasn't always been the first thing we think about every day. And so by creating a platform such as this, that this can truly be something that we focus on from day one across the board as well. Also creating different opportunities for our students as well as, like I said, classes. And we want to, from day one, build that strong community of the school, ensuring that there is this sense of continuity amongst the students and staff. Like TJ and Dr. Yeager referenced, this is a pretty high view of the system, and our goal is to have a little bit more of a framework and more details available on April 1st. And then the last thing is families will play quite a large role in this school system. And so making sure that we're upfront with all of that and, you know, relaying some of those messages. And not to belittle that parents aren't playing a large role, because I can tell you, I'm playing quite a big role doing math every night, that's my guy, but there's a different role that our parents have learned that this year, that a remote setting provides a different setting for parents involved and engaged in this.
All right. So I'm going to talk you through some of the action steps moving forward. The first one is already checkmarked for you because we have started the process, we started in January of vetting both big and small companies that provide online virtual material. One of the things that we noticed big time this year is the amount of time it took for our teachers to get the tools to be technically savvy for our students and available for our students. And so one of the ways to really make sure that your virtual school is put together and put together correctly is having this robust system that has all the tools already embedded within it. So we can spend our time adjusting it and working it and adding the teacher's flavor and style in there, but also already having the setting for them so that they can really focus on the relationship piece and the team building that's really necessary to really build a good class culture. And so we have done that process and looked at a lot of different companies across the nation and feel like that we're bringing to you, and there's a later agenda item, a really robust system that has proven to be effective across the nation and across the globe, and we're really excited about it. One of the things that I'm really excited about is the fact that their customer service is off the charts, and they're very responsive, which is huge, and that's not only for me, but they're responsive to the families and the people that are involved. And so that was a huge deal for me. Some of our Kansas colleagues that are in the same boat are using very similar, and it came highly recommended from them how that particular tool is used within there. So the second part of it is then we start to talk about enrollment. And our enrollment process will start with an application, and that application, again, is that upfront information for our families so they know exactly what they're signing on for and what they're getting into when they're signing up for a virtual school, just so it's very nice and clear and that they understand that the model does have to shift a little bit where families and schools, we have to have a bigger role in that educational process. And so just making all that stuff upfront, once the application process is done, and then we start the enrollment piece and look at that. Started in late March, then Started in late March, then step three, we will start the staffing process where we will staff. Once again, we're looking at people who are virtually minded teachers, that this is something that they really want to do, that this is right up their alley, they're strong in the understanding how ed tech really works and how to connect with students on that platform. Those are the type of teachers. The other part that we're really going to be looking for is those that really can make those relationships because making, getting those relationships going when you're looking at a screen is way tougher than it is in person. And so it'll be crucial that we have these guys that can really pull in a crowd and make a great climate in a short amount of time. And so really excited about finding that as well. And I know because Ryan and I, we hit the buildings once a week, can tell you that we have amazing teachers that are doing that every single day. And so just having that opportunity to aligning our staff in that manner. And then the last piece would then be getting the staff trained in the technologies that we will have available to them. And then once we're training, we'll also be looking at the families and making sure they're trained on the tools as well and they're feeling very comfortable on day one using the technologies that they have available to them as well, just so it's a nice smooth start to a brand new program. All right. With that, all right.
One of the other things that I'd like to mention quickly is TJ and his, TJ, I'm sorry, TJ has been involved, but Matt and his team have been involved also for a number of weeks as well, just because we want to be sure that we're supporting the technology infrastructure for this program, for our students and families as we move forward with that. So certainly a big lift on the learning services side, but of course with our technology team as well. Also to be really clear about this, when virtual schools started in the state of Kansas, many times, and this still happens, but many times districts will open enrollment to other school districts and across the state. That is not our intent. Our intent with this is that we will focus on our students in ALATHA who need us and need our support that way. That will be really important. The other thing that I would mention quickly too is we will provide an opportunity for parents once the information goes out to interface with Ryan and TJ both to have conversation and answer questions and those kinds of things before they make a decision whether or not they want to pursue that path moving forward. One of the other things that I think is important also to understand is we are tracking closely the S R 2 and S R 3 money that will be coming from the federal government through K S D E about some responses to COVID and those kinds of pieces. And while we probably won't have a tremendous staffing cost for our virtual school because it will be, you know, our students that we would have been supporting, whether they would have been in person or in virtual, we will have some additional things that we need to look at. So as we think about social emotional learning, our intent right now is to hire a counselor that will focus on our virtual school, not only for some of the programmatic things that our high school counselors do as well as social emotional support, but also some of the opportunities for small groups and those kinds of things that will continue to be important for kids in a virtual setting as well. So we're looking at all those pieces. TJ kind of brushed over it and Ryan did, but they've been really methodical about meeting with Angelique and her team as we think about supporting our learners with special needs in this program and also our students and with Mike Flintro, who, you know, receive ELL support and that kind of thing. Because we want this to be accessible and an opportunity for all the students that it's the right fit for. And that's really important. As we've looked at research, there are students who typically are not successful in virtual schools for a variety of reasons, and we want to be sure that we set our students and our system up for the best success we can. So just a couple other things and we'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Any questions?
Just real quick, because we talked about sort of the not everything's going to be available, we're not going to be duly enrolled. I get the sense that in some cases, those might be a little bit intertwined. I am absolutely not holding anybody to anything, but just like an example of flavor of what those types of things would be.
So this year, you know, all of our students that have been in remote learning have been connected to remote learning, but it's been through, you know, Haven Croft Elementary or through ALATHA South. So our students that are in our virtual school, because we have to open an actual virtual school through K S D E, so they'll be only enrolled in the virtual school. There are some programs that we offer in ALATHA that don't really lend themselves to a virtual setting. You know, our teachers, as they said, have done a terrific job this year of taking things that were created for in-person learning and adjusting them and manipulating them to provide remote learning. None of the things that they're using primarily were designed for that purpose. So that's a challenge. So one of the examples would be, at this point, we don't intend to offer academy experiences for high school students in virtual learning. It's really hard for us to provide internship opportunities and those group-based experiences and a lot of things that come along with some of those unique things. So those are the things that we're looking at. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah. Dr. Jaeger, who are we involving in the design process of this, whether it's community members or student groups' families? Who is a part of determining this? And I realize I don't want to drill deeply into your details right now. We're looking at a 30,000-foot
So I'll be very transparent about this. The state just made the decision about two weeks ago and we need to have enrollment up very quickly. So we've taken as much input as we can from, you know, parents that have called in and had conversations, parents that have reached out to us. Certainly TJ and Ryan are in touch with our remote teachers on a very frequent basis, getting feedback, those kinds of things, you know. Truly what we would have loved to have done is had a year to study and say, let's get the groups together and make sure that we're doing that. In this situation, we didn't have time to do that and that's just a matter of the timing. So, you know, I think as TJ said, you know, the important piece for us now, I think, is to get started to be clear about what we're offering, but then also grow it over time. So we need to get started, get going so we can meet the needs that our community has now. Like one of the things I would say that over time, I hope we actually call it something besides ALATHA Virtual School, you know, that we actually go through the processes that we would use when we open a school and establish a school and begin to try to build a community around it, which I know that they're going to be very committed to. But in terms of the overall design process, it's been really time intensive just to get it done and get ready. I will say though, that they've done a tremendous job, and they alluded to this also, of reaching out to everybody that they could find that's doing it and how's it going, what have you learned, what, you know, those sorts of pieces, so.
And then additionally, I know this almost goes without saying, but one of the things that's so important to us is considering our blind spots with respect to diversity and inclusion and belonging. And this is certainly an area where moving quickly, we could miss some things.
Certainly.
So it's very important to determine what our methods for identifying what our blind spots will be.
Yeah. And you know, I so appreciate you saying that our schools right now are really looking closely at who the students are that enrolled in remote learning this year, to look for consistencies, to look for student groups maybe that are overrepresented in remote learning and, you know, really trying to think about how do we begin targeting students that either would be a great fit for this or for ones that we need to really work on getting back to our brick and mortar schools. But that's a really good point that we're going to have to think about. And, you know, we've talked at SLT quite a bit about how important it is that the principals and the counselors in the schools are having those individualized conversations about kids so we can make sure we try to get the kids that are most appropriate for this learning opportunity and the learning opportunity and that kind of thing. But absolutely.
Thank you.
Dr. Jaeger, how does, how do extracurriculars work for someone like this? And also is, do we have any idea of the need? And I mean, hiring, I would imagine would be incredibly difficult right now because not having an idea of numbers, so.
So you hear us using words like application process and those kinds of words like that. And one of the things that we'll work to identify is what can we manage as a system? Because when families commit to virtual school for their kids, we're going to be asking them to choose that school. And so, you know, I would say as we visit with other neighbors in the Johnson County area, actually, there's only one other school district that's doing this next year besides us. So we're in good company with at least one other district. Their enrollment actually has been open for a little while, so we're watching their numbers pretty closely as well. But a lot of it will depend on, you know, what the interest looks like, but also what we can support as a system without having an undue impact on our brick and mortar schools. And in terms of extracurricular, that's one of the things that we're working through now. Again, one of the challenges we've had with remote this year is trying to offer that full comprehensive school experience through a virtual model. Almost all the virtual schools that operate do not offer extracurriculars and, you know, traditional kind of extracurricular activities for students. But they do things that are different that they offer at the virtual school that necessarily aren't offered in the brick and mortar school as well. One of the things that I would mention too, we've talked a lot about, is we do have a number of students in our community who have health concerns or they have families with serious health concerns related to the pandemic. We will have an avenue for those students to provide some information where they will get selected for the remote opportunity. We want to, or I shouldn't say remote, I'm going to have to learn a whole new vocabulary here, the virtual opportunity. But we will work also with families to make sure that, you know, families and students that have those extenuating health circumstances do get a place in the virtual school as well.
So thank you, guys. Thanks. It's so nice to have you here and thanks for your work during the pandemic for the remote learning. We did truly just have to learn it on the fly, didn't we? And historically, when I hear virtual in Kansas, I get cringey because the outcomes have been abysmal, horrible. So when we went to remote learning, my understanding is that it was just essentially the same setup. You have a teacher, a human talking, it's not a plug and play video, and they're interacting with students. So with this change to ALATHA Virtual School, what will that look like? Will it be videos that are teaching or will we have teachers and about the outcomes that we, I mean, the trends in history? I mean, no district wanted to really host the virtual school, even though you got per pupil funding, it hit your graduation rates horribly. So I would love to hear more about that.
Yeah. So that was one of the things I was actually looking at today is what is the public school success rate look like for a virtual student compared to a private school's virtual student? And it's actually fairly on par statistically with the success rate between an in-person and public school student. So that was one of the things, because I've also heard horror stories and it was something that was reaffirming to hear that and see some of those success rates as well. But some of the differences that we'll see, and actually I should say more of the similarities, where there will be interactions with teachers, there will be cohorts of students that move through and be able to have, you know, that greater focus on SEL, because that is one of the things we found this year, that our kids had relationships with teachers, but sometimes that relationship between peers wasn't as great. And so being able to, not necessarily, we're not by any stretch of the imagination, tracking students, but putting them in groups where they would have similar interactions throughout the day. And so really trying to be upfront about that and then leaning on some of our, some of the partner that we're looking at, some of their national success stories and looking at the research that they've done, what do we need to do to get there, right? Because I'm an ALATHA product and TJ is too, and we're kind of proud of it and we don't want to do anything so far, right? And so we want to make sure that what we do is the best for our kids, but also the best that our community can put up.
Ms. Felter, let me add a little bit to that. One thing about the virtual format is it has been around for a while and we see both the K-12 and higher ed, there's a good body of research. So in development, as they have looked at that, we know what tends to be more successful or not. Many of the virtual schools were developed as money makers, as an attempt to offset loss of funding or increasing funding for school districts. That's not our focus here. So the pre-counseling to make sure you've got the skill set and the traits to be successful. Those of our students that were in remote that might be interested in virtual, if they weren't successful in remote, they're not going to be successful in virtual. And that's a lot of that upfront counseling to say, we get that you might be interested in this, but you haven't been successful and here are the reasons why. So I think that will, that will offset. It'll be something that we'll have to track, the finance component of it, as Dr. Jaeger said, that we don't want this to become a financial drain from our other programs. And at the same time, we'll have to look at student performance, graduation rates. If we're not being successful at that, then we either need to make the change or move away from a virtual opportunity. So I think that helping families make a good choice upfront to make sure that they have a good chance for success, then looking at the best research as we develop the program and continuing to monitor it. If it's not getting the results that we want for our students, then I know as a district we would, we would step back and reconsider whether this is, this is a good educational opportunity for our kids.
Thank you for that. I think it's critical, especially during the pandemic, to have an option like this. So kudos to everyone for that. So my question on, tell me about like a classroom experience. Is it a plug and play video that we are looking at or is it a teacher or is it like a flipped classroom environment? Can you talk a little bit about that?
So there's this world, oh, sorry. I used to be a coach, I feel like I can forget pretty well. But there's this world between synchronous and asynchronous. And synchronous is a live teacher in front of you. And with the virtual world, it is a little bit balanced on both sides where we, and we really are looking at the age group. I think that's really important. Where you're talking about the younger kids, you're going to have more synchronous opportunities, more teacher time and working through in small groups and a lot of that kind of stuff. Moving on up where the student can have more asynchronous opportunity, where they can learn and grow on their own, but more opportunity to reach into the teacher and say, hey, this is something I'm confused about, can I get a little extra help on? And get that more individual attention. And so that really is a goal. So the virtual world is a little bit, you know, you have this balance here, but really it's going to be based on the age group and what's appropriate for that age group as they move through the school. And so there'll be some of it. And the content that is in the later agenda item, you can kind of think of it like an online textbook. All the resources and stuff is there for them. Students can easily access the information. There's some translation stuff in there, it reads aloud to them if it needs to. So there's some accommodations that are already built in the program that allows kids to easily access information in a quick and easy fashion. So with that being said, there is a balance with it and like I said, it is going to be based on the age group.
Okay. That's awesome. So some of our homebound students, I don't even know if that's still the term, but I had a daughter that had a ski accident and missed a year and a half of school and the homebound learning, I mean, it was critical, you know, to keep her up and she did great, didn't even miss a beat after she got back, you know, well enough to attend school. Would that replace that or could we dovetail it in with like a homebound program?
That is a great question that we will do some thinking about. It's a really good question.
Okay. Just something to consider because it was a lot of work. Kim Dahl was a teacher in sixth grade and she would come after teaching all day at school and teach Abby for like an hour and a half. I mean, she just went the extra mile. So, you know, maybe another opportunity, but thank you guys so much. Good presentation.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Can I say one more? I'm sorry. Dr. Jaeger, funding on virtual students, there's a difference, right?
There is a difference. John Hutchison's going to correct me if I'm wrong, but the base state aid for students in virtual school is $5,000. However, you lose all the other waiting. So if we have a student who's in virtual education, we would get the $5,000, but there'd be no at-risk funding, sped funding, that kind of thing that would go along with the student. Is that correct, Mr. Hutchison?
And even if they have an IEP and they're a virtual student, would there be additional waiting for that student? Do you know? Okay, he's going to check on it. Thank you.
Angelique says she doesn't think so, but we will double check.
I don't believe so.
Okay. Okay. Good to know. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the last piece of our learning presentation for this evening, I'm going to ask Ms. Tolman to come to the podium and give you an update on vaccinations. And we're very fortunate in Kansas, our governor has been committed to trying to get K-12 staff vaccinated as soon as possible. And Ms. Morse, I'm sorry. And it's been a major undertaking, good partnership between the county, the school districts, and Children's Mercy. And these two ladies have had the, you know, one of those things when they started the year in a pandemic, they had no idea they'd be the vaccination queens. And all the work that would go into it to get that organized for a school system as large as we are. So I'm going to let them give you some details for their hard work and where we are at this point in time.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. Welcome. Thanks for having us this evening. I want to spend just my first 30 seconds praising Mr. Morris. I want to spend just my first 30 seconds praising Ms. Morris. She has been an eternal godsend to our district for when you think about all of the pandemic and the work related to contact tracing, supporting her nurses, communicating with the health department. She's on a first-name basis with a lot of those individuals, and they are in touch very frequently. And although we have worked together in years past, we did the AED distribution and the training with that, and some of the other vaccination changes and requirements that went into effect last year, this has given me the opportunity to know Sharon much more personally, and I can just, I can't really share my gratitude for how wonderful of a woman Mrs. Morris is. With that said, she won an award through the foundation last week that we were able to celebrate her as one of our certified employees. So, I hope you take the time to celebrate with me and know that she's such a great person. So, all right, talking about the clinics, you know, when we initially started, there was limited conversation about how this would look, but we were going to get 20,000-plus Johnson County school educators vaccinated. And it's a partnership between all of the six school districts, the county health department, and Children's Mercy Hospital. Children's Mercy, Dr. Watts and her team have been remarkable in supplying the pharmacy, the nurses, and doctors on site. Our school nurses have also volunteered to assist in times of need, but truly Children's Mercy is staffing those clinics and getting the shots in the arms for us. We started our clinics in February, February 4th at Olathe Northwest was our first clinic. We held a two-day clinic there where we did initial vaccines. In that clinic, we were guided to start with as a county, so not just Olathe, but all the six school districts. We started with special educators who, from the data that we were tracking over the course of the pandemic, were some of the most vulnerable employees based on the students not being able to mask appropriately. Our quarantine data showed that those were the students who were being quarantined most frequently when we think about classrooms. And so we started with those, along with our ADA individuals in the district. From there, we pretty much moved to the 65 and up, and then lunchroom supervisors, those that were with students, helping open milk cartons at the elementary level for a very prolonged and sustained, you know, two-hour block every day for five days a week. We got some of our administrators vaccinated so that indeed, when they're called to help and support on those, they, they're able to do so as well and be there. And then we just started working down our eligibility by age. So, how many of our doses we were afforded from the health department, we sent out that number of invitations. If people did not fill those invitations, then we would send out another set of, you know, 30, 50, 100, whatever we were given until we had the slots full. We've conducted eight total first-dose clinics in a month. In that period of time, we have vaccinated 3,228 Olathe employees. We are on, what would you say, Sharon, young twenties at this point, and hope to finalize first-dose clinics going through what we would consider to be an all-call when we get down to the very end of eligible employees by age next week. So that would mean that anyone in this, in the school district who were given an opportunity to come to a previous clinic but couldn't for whatever reason, or missed the invitation, would have the opportunity to come kind of in that all-call, last-call, first-dose clinic. So, I'm going to turn it over to Sharon and let her talk a little bit about second doses, and then we'll be happy to take questions if they can.
So, the second-dose clinics with Pfizer occur approximately 21 days after, but give or take, there is a little leeway in that. It is based on who received first dose. In Kansas, those doses are allocated, when the first dose goes in, the second dose is set aside and already allocated. So second-dose clinics cannot be used to give first doses to individuals. They are, it's like, they handle it almost like controlled substances. They are very tightly monitored, and people that come for a second-dose clinic must be people that have already received the first dose. We received that list from Children's Mercy and Johnson County Health Department just prior to the event, and we sent it based on the email addresses that they put in their consent form. So it may be, we prefer Olathe Public Schools because it's easier to track them and figure out who they are if there's an error in the email address, if it's an Olathe address. If it's a Hotmail address, sometimes it's hard to distinguish who is that that didn't get their invitation. Those invitations go out, and those clinic dates, the slots are filled with those first dose coming back for second dose. And we've had very good success with those, not only filling up, but I will say that thank you to Olathe staff, we have a very low no-show rate in our district, and we're ready if there is a no-show or a cancellation for any reason. We have a standby list of people that are ready to jump in their cars and come according to the organized way that we have progressed in those ages. So if we just take, or always make progress towards our goal.
And that has a lot to do with their organization, the way that they set up, communicated, notifying staff, prep them for what's coming. The other school districts realized what type of success Olathe was having, and I think have now modeled all of their systems off of what the two of them have created, so that was a huge benefit through the first several clinics. We benefited because of other no-shows in districts and our ability to get staff there on that standby list. And in all of those cases, we're able to vaccinate more staff than we'd originally anticipated because we could take advantage. Children's Mercy has a heck of an operation with the pharmacist and setting all that up and the nurses being there, but the other component of that is they're not going to waste a single dose. So, I know in many cases where the clinic was supposed to end at eight or nine o'clock, they're still operating an hour, hour and a half afterwards because we've been able to notify folks, districts, and they're on their way, and they're going to wait to make sure that they use those doses. So, both, both of these ladies have spent endless hours, not only in making sure our spreadsheets are right and the communication, but they have been at every vaccination clinic that the county has offered to make sure that they're there to help our employees and work them through the process and any problems. And I can tell you, that is the exception, not the rule, for school districts, and it's, our employees are paying the dividends for their hard work.
Thank you. You guys, great job. Let's just.
So, kind of along those lines, I just wanted to specifically call you guys out, and you know, this, as Mr. Allison said, this was not on your job description a year ago. It was a huge job, and you guys stepped up to the plate and hit a home run, and we're so proud of you as the Olathe School District, and thank you so much for really going above and beyond the call of duty here.
Thank you for your support.
Can I ask a question about, so how far are we into the second-dose clinics? Do you know any numbers on that? Like, how many people have received it yet?
Like, fully vaccinated is what they're asking.
Yeah, I mean, if we started, you know, February 4th, some should have, right?
So we have roughly 920-ish that have had second doses through that first clinic.
Thank you, that is amazing.
We're anticipating a second dose.
Wonderful. So, if we stay on this trajectory and the supply remains steady, is there a projected date of full vaccination for all those who wanted to have it? I know that's a big ask, but...
No, I think the goal, and you know, of course, our goal is as soon as we can do it, and ultimately, I think if it was up to Sharon and I and we had the supply, we could just cut it out and one, we could spend 12-hour days doing it. That's the way we are kind of operating. But unfortunately, the supply has not been there to this point. We have gotten a larger number here in the last couple of weeks, which has really helped us. They are hopeful that the first-dose clinics will conclude next week. So at the end of next week, we would be finished with first-dose clinics that you would anticipate middle of April or end of April to be the final conclusion for second doses.
I would like to emphasize that if people miss these clinics, they may be in quarantine, they just may not make it to one of these, that does not mean that they do not have access to a dose, to their, to their shots. They remain eligible in the state of Kansas, and so there are a number of different avenues they can use, and some indeed are even using it now, and we will get cancellations because they'll say, we just went and got it somewhere else through the health department, CPS, I mean, it's opening up, and as long as they're eligible, which they are as an educator, they can get it from any of those sources.
That's fantastic. And if they have questions, would they contact you, or what's the way to find out? The health department?
That's a great question. If they have questions, we have created, thanks to our technology department, a COVID vaccine email address. That we have a couple of folks managing that, and they will get them from Kansas.
Awesome. That's great. And one more question. Do we have a percent that we know of that are declining the vaccination?
That's a hard number to track for a variety of reasons, because if people access the vaccine at another clinic, like we were just describing, the community, a henhouse, a price chopper, and they decline our opportunity, that doesn't necessarily mean that they weren't vaccinated. And so unless we had some way of, you know, having them show us their card or tracking, it's all on kind of the honor system of when we get finished with this and we send out a survey that says, you know, did you get the vaccine or not, that's the best guess we could have.
Okay. That's good to know. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving along to action consent. Does anyone have any specific questions? If not, can I get a motion?
I've got a question about 4.07. The elementary reading at ELA. Is that, what's ELA stand for?
English Language Arts.
I was making sure.
Yep, it's English Language Arts Reading.
So, is this, it's part of the dyslexia mandate? Is that, do you want to talk a little bit about that?
I'm glad you asked a question. It is, you know, this is part of our regular adoption process that we'd be looking at anyway right now for elementary ELA materials. However, because of the dyslexia mandate and the work around structured literacy, which is the other part of it, that has led the work with this. You may remember, gosh, I don't know, 14 years ago, that's not true, but we introduced you to our dyslexia consultant, Stacy Cates. I think that may have just been last year, actually, but seems like an awfully long time ago. She has been working with both Kim Dahl and Linda Boxberger, our ELA coordinators, on really sourcing what are the things that are most appropriate to meet the mandates, if you will, of KSDE around structured literacy and dyslexia. And so this tonight is actually the first piece in that. Just based on some comments earlier tonight, too, you know, I could give you kind of an update on where we are with some of that. So, the state of Kansas required a six-hour training for all of our staff around structured literacy. We've actually accomplished the first half of that with our entire staff. We'll do the second part of that in April, on April 16th. But what that will look like largely for our elementary staff is beginning to learn about the new resource, which is 95% group is what's on here tonight. And that is one of the very best resources available for supporting students, both who are dyslexic and students that demonstrate the characteristic of dyslexia. So, this is our first, I would say, our first bona fide purchase that you could say is in direct relation to the work that we've been asked to do from the State Department of Education. It also ties well with our LINK grant that we've been using the last number of years, three years. We were lucky because we were able to get a head start on some of this work, so we have been using the 95% group intervention for many of our students who have shown characteristic of dyslexia for about three years now, but this is actually the tier-one support for all students. That's important as part of the structured literacy to support that as well. So that's what's on the agenda tonight.
That's wonderful. The phonics piece of it, is phonics back now? It was gone for a little while.
Phonics is back now, for sure, yes. Yeah, and actually, it's one of the things that's been emerging over the last number of years, is that many students who struggle with comprehension or fluency, that many times the first indication is challenged with phonics. And a lot of the reading programs that have been used for, I don't know, the last two decades in our country have kind of stepped back away from phonics, and what they've realized is we need to teach kids about phonics and the way words work together and those things a little bit differently. So, it's a really positive move in the right direction.
Does structural literacy mean phonics?
Structured literacy is different parts of literacy, so it's phonics, comprehension, fluency. If my ELA experts were in the room, they could tell you the other two, but there's five of them that are part of that.
Awesome. And so was this an unfunded mandate, except for we have the LINK grant?
So the LINK grant has helped us with some of it, for sure. Like I said, this was, we would have been talking about a new resource for elementary ELA this year either way. There are some purchases that we're going to still have to make. You know, we're going to need to be looking at a universal screener for all of our students so we can be sure that we don't miss students who have characteristics of dyslexia. That's something that we'll have to have in place by the time school starts next year. So in the next couple of months, we'll be bringing that information to you. This is what we'd like to use in Olathe. Right now, we're piloting several different things out in schools with our teachers and getting feedback, those kinds of things. But that's not, that's money that will come from somewhere in the textbook budget, so likely because we'll do that, it will prevent us from doing something that we would have done, you know, kind of in our typical rhythm, that sort of thing.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
Any other questions? If not, can I get a...
I move to... 95% items, 4.01 through 4.07 as presented.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Wickliff. Let's take it by Mr. Gary.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Ms. Wickliff?
Yes.
All right, and on to action bids, contracts, agreements. We have quite a few there, 14 items. Did anyone have any specific questions about any of those 14 items?
I'll just... If not, could I just ask on 5.14, that replacement's a big number, that's, that's just normal plan, right, of moving along there with the replacement of all the Apple...
That's our normal replacement cycle.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not...
Let me ask about 5.11, the video equipment for high schools, live streaming events. So, this is for Olathe East and Olathe South, and do our other high schools have this equipment already, or will we eventually have it for all? Who should I be asking?
Yes, this, this will bring those two high schools up to comparable equipment to the others. So this, this is helping us make sure that they're, they're on par with their peer high schools.
Good. And, I mean, we've been doing a lot, remote streaming as it is. Were they able to during the pandemic?
I don't know, Ms. Albers, they were, if, if there was a desire, my understanding is, and Clint can correct me if I'm wrong, that there may have been outside contractors, some other equipment that we had to bring in for, for some of the programs to be able to do that, but that's something we supported knowing it'd be important during the pandemic.
Yeah, they've found a way to do it, this will obviously bring up the screen. Provide the technology to do it on a consistent basis.
Okay, thank you very much. Do you want a motion?
Sure.
Okay.
If no one has any other questions?
I move to approve items, action items 5.01 through 5.14 as presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Felter. Let's take it by Mr. Wickliff. Thank you by Mr. Wickliffe.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Ms. Wickliffe?
Yes.
All right. And on to action other, 6.01, approval of bond resolution. I believe John's going to come up, and I thought I saw Dustin come in the room. Did I? Nope, I did. Okay.
Good evening. Actually, we have Dustin Navy here, who is our bond consultant, as well as Kevin Wendy, who is our bond attorney. So if he has some really detailed questions, I've got plenty of backup. I'll let Dustin give you some of the details, but kind of in summary, when we came last month, we actually anticipated a savings of about $5.3 million, ended up saving $6.3 million. That's mainly due to the structure. We kept the payments essentially the same and are paying the bonds off faster. That's 10,000-foot level. I'll just step aside and let the expert explain the details of it.
That's actually a really good summary. Again, Dustin Navy, Piper Sandler, good to see everybody again this evening. And I guess first thing, I appreciate the Finance Committee and the Board taking action last month. It was actually very timely. As many of you are probably watching, market conditions, things have changed fairly considerably here in the last few weeks, and the district was able to actually lock rates shortly after the Board authorized proceeding earlier in February. So really, two things, and one is the savings, I think, is really, really important, the 6-point, almost 6.4 million, which if you look back over the last seven years, now we're a little less than $36 million of total savings. The interest rate was at 1.87%, which, I sound like a broken record, but it seems every time we talk, there's rates are at record lows. The other part was the sale of the bonds related to the remaining 2016 authority. That was a 10-year bond issue at a .87%. So pretty incredible, pretty remarkable in terms of timing. As we've talked about many times, really, the objective is to make sure we're meeting the objectives set forth in the financial plan. So those objectives relate to making sure we're putting the district in a better financial position. Interest cost savings earlier at retirement, but most importantly is making sure we continue to meet the mill levy requirement, mill levy commitment to voters. So glad to stand for any questions.
Any questions?
All I can say is Dustin, you have made a great decision that I am so proud of. So thank you for helping us save, that's a big deal to save our taxpayers that amount of money.
Appreciate that opportunity.
Yeah, I'll just echo that, and in a year when good news is not always in great supply, we appreciate that, and two presentations in a row of good news, so it's nice. We appreciate it.
Come back in April.
Keep it going.
Thank you. Thanks, Dustin.
All right. If there aren't any other questions, can I get a motion from a board member?
I move to approve action items 6.01 and 6.02 as presented.
Second. Is that okay? Does the Board have any questions on 6.02?
I think we should at least discuss it, just for public awareness.
Okay.
Could we separate them out? That's awesome.
So I'll just do 6.01.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay. So that's okay? They don't have to read the whole motion?
Why don't we read the motion, just in?
Well, there's two motions.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Jeff.
You can actually say "as presented" from above. I checked. You don't have to read the full paragraph.
Go for it.
So I move to approve action other item 6.01 as presented.
Second.
All right. Motion by Ms. Schultz. Thank you by Mr. McHugh.
Somehow you're first every time here.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Ms. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Ms. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Ms. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Ms. Wickliffe?
Yes.
All right. And on to 6.02. I didn't know if there were any questions.
Did we have the second motion that we have to do?
So we lumped those together.
It was all 4 to 6.01.
All together. Okay, good. Okay. I just thought it'd be worth talking about the resolution to waive graduation requirements, what that is.
Let me give you a little bit of a walk back. If you think almost a year ago, we asked the Board to approve a resolution because of the closing of Kansas schools regarding the seniors' graduation requirements. What I brought back to you again is a similar motion this year. Because of the pandemic, students that may have gotten behind in graduation requirements, it's been difficult for them to make up those requirements. The state of Kansas requires 21 credits, and they're specific in how many social studies, math, science, those types of things. Olathe exceeds the state requirements with 24. So in this case, it would allow those students that were within the state mandated graduation requirements but not having yet met the full 24 of Olathe. Now, that does not impact their core requirements or the core requirements that Olathe has. What this will predominantly be for a student would be around one of the electives. So they're still going to have to met math, science, language arts, social studies, our financial literacy requirement. It's going to be in the elective area that we would potentially waive a credit. It won't be for a majority of our students. I would say that where this will impact is in a number of our students that decided to go remote. If they got behind in a course, it was very difficult for them to catch up for that credit. High schools are continuing to work to make sure that students are meeting the Olathe criteria, but this would give us an opportunity to provide a little leeway, given that, you know, really, the last 18 months have not been what any of our juniors or seniors would have anticipated, and this would just be for the class of 2020-21, and would not be necessary, I can see, again. So this will provide our students an opportunity to stay on track, meet the state requirements, and move on with their academic career and to the workforce.
Thank you for that.
Any questions?
I move to approve the resolution suspending excess graduation credit requirements for the class of 2021 as presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Felter. Thank you by Mr. Wickliffe.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Ms. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
All right. And then we have our future action items there for the Board to look through, if there's any questions about upcoming meetings. And then information written in the February Head Start Director's Report is also in there as well. And then we move on to topics for discussion. So does any board member have any?
I'd like to mention this week, I know it's been very stressful for a lot of people. I've been able to, as many of us have, attend, I was at Olathe West, Olathe Northwest, at Mission Trail, in Oregon Trail, to just kind of get a pulse of how things are going, to see firsthand what classrooms look like, transitions, lunches, those types of things, hopefully offer some support. And it's been great to be able to say thank you to so many people, actually, as well, in person. And I just want to commend again, I know we do it a lot, our staff, our building leaders, I mean, the students, obviously, three days or four days in, and they're doing outstanding work. I see just so much, it's just, I'm just so proud to be part of what's going on with the way that people are responding to this. So from a leadership perspective and those types of people, right, all the way down to the students in kindergarten who I went and watched do their Spanish immersion at Manchester Park. I mean, it's great to be back in the schools to see some of the things going on, but I just want to commend everybody publicly for what they're doing, and know that we're here to listen as we go about this together this last quarter of the year or so. So I would just want to mention that and say thanks.
All right. Anyone else? Ms. Felter?
Thank you to everyone for this first fully back-in-person week. It was a lot of work, and we are so grateful. I meant to mention in our action consent agenda item, the Treasury report, and so I'm a little out of order here, but there was a note about the federal funds being delayed again, and I just, I wanted to highlight that and ask you, Mr. Allison, is that a state delay or a federal delay of funding?
Mrs. Osborne can correct me, because I can't pull that up, but I believe that's been a note every month. That is an ongoing delay. There's a timing. The draw comes 30 days after we asked for the draw, so it's always in the, it always looks like it's in a negative balance as we move forward. Is that correct? Nothing special, all right? Thank you. See? That's why I could support it.
So it's not pandemic-related? It's operational?
No, it'll happen every month. It's just a timing problem.
Good. I know I've seen it before, but I thought I ought to probably ask about that, because, you know, it is a little asterisk. So thank you for that. And I think that's it.
All right. Anyone else? I was just going to ask real quick, so one of the speakers had mentioned graduation, and I know we, I don't want to get into like a whole presentation here, but we have dates set, I believe, and?
Yes, the dates.
I apologize if I'm putting a car before the horse.
The dates have been set. High schools are planning on a similar format to last year. We will not be doing an indoor makeup for inclement weather, so we've got the, following our normal graduation dates, we've got the next three days the following week, that if inclement weather forced a cancellation, then kind of in order of the cancellation would be whether you were on Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday of the following week. So we won't have, or last year we had planned inclement weather, then we'd go inside, but that severely limited the number of family members that could attend, so we've tried to make those inclement weather dates. But information will be coming out very shortly from the high schools to senior families and how that whole process will look. But yes, those dates we set early, and they're still on the calendar, and that's what we're, the process we're planning on following.
All right. If nothing else, then move on to superintendent comments.
Might I very brief? I would just echo Mr. Gary's comments and thank our staff. A lot of the planning to make this week successful started back last summer, not knowing when we would have students returning, and it was pretty impressive, even on day one, going into, as an example, Olathe East and watching the cafeteria and the social distancing and that whole arrangement for five different lunch periods. I'm not sure who to give credit to, but I thought kind of a genius move. I wondered how quickly we'd be able to sterilize the tables as they rotated through, and watch staff spray the tables down in almost a broom-sized type of squeegee, that they're able to clean the tables and disinfect them quickly enough that the next group coming in, it's ready to go. So it's down to those type of minute details that had to be thought through and ready to go, and that's what our principals, our teachers, and others have done to be able to make this week a success. So thank you for all that hard work and diligence on behalf of our students.
All right. Thank you for that. And on to, we have one executive session tonight. Do we have an idea on how long that would last?
10 minutes.
10 minutes.
I'd move that the Board adjourned executive session for the purpose of consultation with an attorney to discuss legal issues for the body or agency pursuant to the exception for matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma, and that the Board return to the regular meeting at 7:35 PM in this room.
Second.
I think Mr. McHugh won there. So motion by Mr. Gary. Thank you by Mr. McHugh.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Ms. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Ms. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Ms. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Ms. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
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 Yes.
Ms. Wickliffe?
Yes.